Will the meeting please come to order? And please take a moment for silent prayer or reflection. We'll stand for the pledge now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry, will you take the row?
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
Archiana Olliar?
Yes.
Yep.
John Nasten?
Here.
Lisa Ramon?
Here.
Kathy Fox?
Here. Do we have a call to the public?
I do not at this point, no.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will turn the meeting over now to Mr. Gardner for recognition of visitors.
I'd like to introduce Kristy Olson, this is her second, she is a National Board Certified Teacher, and she is going to have the privilege of introducing our three newest recertification teachers for National Board. One of the things our district is trying to do is place emphasis on promoting National Board in general. This is an area that basically guarantees the quality of instruction and the instructor in front of students is going to be exceptional. Teachers have to go through an arduous task of modules, they really look at their teaching practice, they have to prove that they have some quality and pass and become certified because it takes a tremendous amount of work and effort. So we're saluting these teachers tonight. Kristy herself beginning now as a board certified teacher. Kristy, you have the floor.
Madam President, members of the governing board, first I'd like to have Monica Hall come up, please. I know she's in there, thank you. Monica and the K-12 Foundation have really been instrumental with their community support of National Board certification and the impact that it has brought to the teachers and the students of our district, so I really wanted to recognize that. All right. We know that state certification identifies the minimum requirements for teachers. Board certification is based on high and rigorous standards that elevate teaching practice through performance-based assessments. The ultimate result is improved performance as student achievement. Teachers who have participated in board certification have overwhelmingly stated it is the most powerful development experience of their careers. Since 2002, 26 teachers in Lake Havasu Unified School District have achieved board certification. Fifteen board certified teachers are currently employed in our district. These teachers have earned a wide range of certifications including generalists, literacy, science, social studies, CTE, physical education, and exceptional needs. Our board certified teachers have a total of 265 years of teaching experience and range from seven to 28 years of individual experience. They serve children in many different capacities as administrators, coordinators, mentors, teacher leads, cooperating teachers, department chairs, and most importantly, classroom teachers. By conservative estimates, these teachers have directly impacted over 6,000 students. This does not include the impact they have on students in their roles as athletic coaches, club advisors, program coordinators, and administrators, or the indirect impact they have on students of other teachers in their roles as cooperating teachers for student teachers, or high school ed profession students, or in their roles as mentor teachers supporting the newest members of our profession. So if my Pam would like to come up, and Jan and Sarah and Marcia. I'm going to talk about each one of these remarkable people. All right. So this year, we would like to celebrate and honor Pam Goddard, who earned board certification in the area of exceptional needs. Pam's pursuit of board certification had to do with validating a career in special education spanning over 40 years. Pam's career began in Illinois, teaching in an alternative high school setting as well as serving students in K-8 resource. She then moved to Washington to teach high school resource, then on to Texas where she served as a four-through-six resource teacher at a private children's home, serving students who were emotionally disturbed. While in Texas, she taught high school resource and was an educational diagnostician. Her career then took her to California, where she taught in both a high school self-contained and resource classroom. She also served as a special education program specialist. Finally, Pam moved to Arizona, where she taught in a high school self-contained classroom and a resource classroom for students in grades four and five. Pam ended her career with the Arizona School for the Deaf and Blind as a specialist in vision. In Pam's words, "Board certification was a personal goal and a great way to go out with a bang." In her very last year of teaching, Pam Goddard completed all four components and became a National Board Certified Teacher. And I know Pam wants to say just a few words.
No pressure. As far as I'm concerned, National Board certification is the ultimate goal, and we need teachers with this kind of expertise in the classroom. Now, my goal is to give back to the community, and I'm working with Kristy, being a coach on those coaching Saturdays to help with the teachers that are pursuing National Boards, and hopefully, in this district, we will have the most teachers in the United States. And, you know, having that guarantees that our students have the best and can achieve.
All right. And now, we'd like to honor our three teachers who have recently recertified. Nearly a decade ago, after their initial certification, three board certified teachers committed themselves to renewing their certifications. This is why board certification is still meaningful to them and the students they serve. Mrs. Marcia Becker originally certified in the area of early adolescent through young adult physical education. Mrs. Becker is currently the career and technical education coordinator. Her words, "At first, the thought of renewal made me terrified. I remembered all of the emotions and struggles I had gone through, the rigorous process the first time, but once I started diving into the core propositions and reflecting on my practice, my initial fears were no longer an issue. Renewing my National Board certification reminded me that good teaching requires not only content knowledge, but more importantly, student connections, differentiated learning styles, and relationship building. The five core propositions are the foundation for my teaching practice, and renewal gave me a revived sense of excitement and passion for the career I chose and the students and the adults I now have connections with. I am thankful to be surrounded by other supportive NBCTs like Jan and Sarah, who push themselves and others to do the best they can in and outside the classroom." Mrs. Sarah Darnell originally certified as a middle childhood generalist. Mrs. Darnell currently teaches English at Lake Havasu High School. Through the renewal process, I revisited the standards and practices which have become a major part of my classroom practices. In addition, I reflected on the impact I have had on my students, my peers, school, and district. Teaching with the board standards has made me a more thoughtful and valuable teacher because I am delivering important content to students and helping them understand, learn, and make connections with the material. Being a board certified teacher has taught me the importance of regularly reflecting and refining my teaching practice to make improvements for my students and myself. And finally, Mrs. Jan Esme, originally certified as an early adolescence science teacher. Mrs. Esme currently teaches science at Lake Havasu High School. The process of National Board certification is rigorous, intensive, and totally focused on me and my growth. It is a self-reflective process like no other. It helped me figure out how to become a better teacher each time through the process. I was able to apply new skills immediately. Because the certification process requires teachers to spend time thinking and writing about their students, it leads to more focused, intentional teaching. Because the process is so rigorous and intentional, I am reflective all the time about my practice, student work, student engagement, and student goals. I know that because going through National Board certification, I am more focused on how my work impacts, and I continually reflect, plan, and implement strategies for students, their learning, and their progress. Please join me in congratulating all of these individuals."
Three more. Congratulations to all of you. Job well done. Could we have all of the NBC teachers stay there? All of the NBC teachers who are here with us tonight, stand? And Mrs. Olson, thank you for the leadership that you have provided for the NBCT program. It has obviously made an enormous difference. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh, let's not forget about, I've got to start wearing my glasses. I just got them prescribed, and I can't remember, I'm not in the habit, so just forgive me. Mrs. Nowis House, are you here? There you are.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Assayer, and directors and community, this month's legislative update starts off with SB 1014, the ELL reform bill. We are excited to say, not because it has passed committee, not because it's received 90 legislative yeses and no opposition, but the yes to the governor, he has signed it. We now have the opportunity to do what's best for our ELL population. Also, we have Bill SB 1071, which is being discussed, or was discussed earlier today, at the Senate Education Committee, the teacher evaluation bill. The Association believes this is moving in the appropriate direction in regards to teacher evaluation, but there are some concerns. The bill will take the responsibility of setting the teacher evaluation framework from the State Board of Education to our local governing board. It will also lower the percentage of the quantitative data on student academic process, which is currently 33 to 50, down to 20 to 40. But unfortunately, this bill has included language in it this year that would, the teacher evaluation even more reliant on student test scores. This bill would harm teachers who evaluation would have to include student test data not relevant to their classroom instruction. So we encourage you to contact your legislators to discuss the opportunity of amending SB 1071. This past month, an opportunity was shared with members to meet with our, to meet with one of our state legislators, Representative Biassucci, to discuss bills that would be coming before him in committee and on the floor. It was a great opportunity for all involved. And locally, in three weeks during spring break, we will have members at the Capitol on Monday and Tuesday to meet with our legislators and attend both the Senate and the House Education Committee meetings. You're all welcome to join us. And finally, as one that's going through the candidacy process for National Board, because I know, I personally want to congratulate Jan, Marcia, Sarah, and Pam. Thank you.
Okay, now, I am asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Terry.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Archiana Olliar?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes. All right, old business, item 5.1, Mrs. Bestedagel.
It is recommended that the governing board approve the second reading of policies GCQE, GDQC, GCQEA, and GCQEA-dash-E. Retirement of professional staff members, retirement of professional support staff members, post-retirement employment option, and the pre-o participation request form. The policy is not aligned with current Arizona State Retirement System practices or current practices of LHUSD. The updated policy informs provide accurate information for employees and will help streamline the retirement and pre-o process. No further changes have been made to the policy since the first reading on January 15, 2019.
I move that we approve 5.1 as presented.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay. Terry.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Archiana Olliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes. Okay, with new business, Mr. Murray, item 6.1.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the board approve to discontinue the technology fee of $5 per year beginning in the 2019-20 school year. To align with Arizona Revised Statute 15-342, for high school pupils, the governing board may assess reasonable fees for fine arts and vocational education courses and for optional services, equipment and materials offered to the pupils beyond those required to successfully complete, the basic requirements of any other course, except that no fees shall be charged for pupils' access to or use of computers or related materials. And this, just in addition to that, and to clarify, this would be a district-wide discontinuation of fees, not just, not just at the high school, it'd be across the board.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that we approve 6.1 as presented.
I second.
All right. Is there any discussion of this item?
I would just like to say as a parent that I am very happy to see us discontinuing the nickel-and-dime technology fee.
Ditto.
Terry.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Archiana Olliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes. Item 6.2, Mr. Murray.
Actually, I will yield to Mrs. Becker.
All right.
Madam President, governing members of the board, I would like to recommend, it is recommended that governing board approve the purchase and installation of an automotive scissor rack from Bullock Equipment at a price not to exceed $35,000. The scissor rack would be installed in the automotive shop, and the new lift would be state-of-the-art Hunter technology. It would facilitate a five-year plan to upgrade laser alignment technology to the current industry standard. The new Hunter alignment lift can be used for all aspects of the automotive repair in addition to automotive alignment. Students will benefit directly from the technology upgrade by enhancing the students' opportunity to earn additional industry certifications. Our students earn Student ASE certifications, and so this will also help with some of those modules that they have. The old outdated lift is unsafe for student operation and will be removed per district policy. WAVE has already approved the funding for this installation through their Growth and Sustainability Grant in January, so, does anybody have any questions about the installation, the upgrade?
I'm gonna put it on the floor, and I would move that we approve 6.2 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are we going to also be looking at the air compressors at the same point in time? This is an air compressor-run device, so...
As far as I know, it's run by computer technology.
Right, but the actual lifting...
The actual up and down of it. It's definitely something we can look into.
I just, I just want to make sure we've got enough air compressor capacity to run the rack.
Okay.
Terry.
Archiana Olliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Mrs. Assayer, item 6.3.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the governing board approve Mrs. Becky Goldberg as hearing officer for 2019, funded from Medicaid. This approval process follows a calendar year. Mr. Brad Gardner, Director of Educational Services, will preside if Mrs. Goldberg is unavailable. It is further recommended that the governing board, per district policy, continue to meet in executive session to hear all expulsion hearings referred or requested by administration. Our policy JKE allows the board to appoint a hearing officer to oversee discipline suspension hearings. This position is reviewed annually. A special services representative will continue to attend any discipline hearing for a special education student.
May I have a motion to approve item 6.3?
I move that we approve 6.3 as presented.
I second.
Any discussion?
Is there a plan in place to increase the depth of our pool for hearing officers?
We have tested the water with Mr. Rooney to see if he was interested, since he's a recently retired board member. Typically, it is former board members who serve as hearing officers because they have an understanding of what the governing board considers, but we haven't received any direction from the board to expand that any further. We could do so, certainly.
I, I would think that we have a plethora of former board members, many of which who are now in the retired position in life, and I would think that, and no offense to Mr. Gardner at all, but I would, I would think that we would want to have a pool of people that were no longer directly affiliated with the district to oversee. I just think that, that not only having a good group that aren't affiliated with the district and some depth where we could go, it doesn't have to be 20 people, I mean, two or three would be, would be plenty, I would think, but I know Mrs. Goldberg can't make everything.
Okay. Terry.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Archiana Olliar?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes. Mr. Murray, item 6.5. I mean, 6.4.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year 1718. The Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One is required to obtain an annual financial audit because the district expends $750,000 or more in federal awards, subject to the requirements of the Single Audit Act amendments of 1996 and the implementing regulations of the OMB. The audit firm of Heinfeld Meach has provided their final report, and the report has been sent electronically to you prior to this meeting, and copies of the report will be provided to the Arizona Department of Ed and the Auditor General's office. Just by way of information, the public may request an electronic copy of the audit from the superintendent's office, and as well, a permanent copy of the report will be kept on file in the business office for future reference.
May I have a motion to approve 6.4?
I make a motion, we approve 6.4 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Go ahead.
I just want to say how much I appreciate the transparency that is being displayed when it comes to our finances now. This was the first year that I got all the back information, what was it called that you sent out?
There's the management letter that came out.
Exactly. I'd never seen that before, and that was the kind of transparency that I was talking about years ago that I wanted to see in action. It really explained a lot of things, because I struggled with this CAFR for the past few years, and so I just appreciate being able to ask questions and get very direct answers, and this looks much different than the 2015 CAFR. I'm just gonna say that.
It does.
Yeah, there were a couple highlights here that I just wanted to point out. Our total net position increased primarily because of the construction projects going on within the district because of the bond. Just, just overall improvements being made, financial well-being in the district, as I mentioned to the press, is very sound at this particular time.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd like to add too, that one of the things that we heard over and over again when we ran the bond and the override campaign in 2016 was that, well, you're not audited, or you're not looked at regularly, or you're not scrutinized correctly, and we do one of these every year. So every year, we actually have what, what the general public would be considered, would consider an in-depth audit of everything in the district, from attendance to financial position, to accounting practices, to you name it. And I think, I think that, from my position, making sure that the public knows that we actually do get audited and in-depth once a year, whether we like it or not, is, is I think one of the most important things, we can, we can let them know that their money's being looked after very stringently within the district.
Thank you. I would like to mention that, you know, our appreciation and respect for you and your department, as I recall, in looking over the audit, there was only one thing, it was one small item posted to the wrong account. How easy is that to correct, and it's so, you know, so easy for something like that to happen. I think that's just remarkable, one thing, so please, the part of the board, please let them know that we noticed. Good job.
Thank you.
Terry.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Archiana Olliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes. Item 6.5, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve a request to begin the application process and advertise upcoming vacancies for the two, for two Employee Benefit Trust Board positions. In alignment with ARS 15-382C, the amended agreement and restated declaration of the Lake Havus Unified School District EBT Trust Agreement states, "The trust will be administered by either five or seven voting trustees appointed by the governing board." The trust agreement stipulates that EBT trustees serve three-year terms, or serve a three-year term, and with a restatement agreement, may only serve from this point forward two consecutive three-year terms. Two current EBT trustees' terms expire on June 30 of 2019, and the application process will be open to all interested individuals, and members whose term is expiring may reapply conditional to the terms outlined in the trust agreement, and the governing board will... will follow policy EIC, self-insurance programs adopted on October 17th, 2017, and the current EBT board trustees are as follows. Those are listed up on the screen and in front of you, or I could read them if you'd like.
All right. Do I have a motion to...
I move that we authorize the application process to begin for trustees for the Employee Benefit Trust.
A second?
Second.
Okay. As far as discussion goes, I do want to ask something. I know that Mr. Christensen thought that his expiration date was incorrect. Have you had a chance to research that?
I have, and part of my wonderful staff, they pulled some previous agenda items, and back on June 20th, 2017, it came to the board where we had three members at the time whose term was expiring in 2020. And from what I recall in that conversation, when the trust agreement was looked at and updates were made to it, I think a decision at the time was to try to stagger those expirations so we didn't have many of them leaving all at one time and having to fill the board with new individuals. So at that particular time, Mr. Christensen was one of them set to expire in 2020, but then the revised realignment to stagger the terms put him as expiring in 2019. So we would have, back in 2017, we'd have two expiring in 2018, two in 2019, and one in 2020, whereas the old way, we had three in 2020, one in 2018, and one in 2019. So that explains the realignment.
That sounds right to you.
Sure.
Okay. You're so easy. Thank you. All right, then.
So I'm just, are we going to ask if they have interest? Are we going to open the process? How's that going to go for the current city members?
Okay.
Because we've got them both here, so I just wondered.
It just states that they can reapply.
Right.
So I would just make the applications available to all, then, once we compile it, we'll come back to this meeting and schedule a time for you to agendize this so you can review all the applicants at that time, unless we receive further direction from you.
Okay. All right.
The main concern was if we're planning on opening up the applications, getting it posted in plenty of time for people in the community who might be interested in applying, since the last couple of times, the process has been a little bit rushed.
Okay. Any suggestions that anyone on the board has about a way to go about this?
I think doing the application process is just fine. I understand what Diana's saying, and it was a little rushed because the whole process changed when we updated the trust documents, so...
Okay. That's fine. Terry.
It's good, and I hope they'll both turn the applications in to continue the search.
Thank you. Terry.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Archie Anna Olliar.
Yes.
Kathy Fox.
Yes. Item six point six, Mrs. Assayer.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, did I have to sit at their desk? Okay. There should be a document at your desk that looks like this, and I realize the audience doesn't have those, we can certainly make them available. We went through our curriculum work sessions, and our recommendation right now would be that the board actually review the information that was discussed at our curriculum work sessions, and then discuss what you heard, what you're thinking about what you heard, and then provide some direction to staff for what we believe our next steps would be. So what I want to share with you, and this particular document and the format of it, in the agenda, and everybody has attached to each of the agendas for each work session, the school-specific notes that were taken. And so basically, what I did is I went through and highlighted on each of them similar comments, just looking for themes throughout. And so this document does not include every single comment that was made, but it highlights some of the different strands that were through it. So the first page is identified in columns for the card comments in Planning, Resources, Pedagogy, and then miscellaneous comments that were there, and that goes on, if the pages were numbered, for three pages. Then on page four, there starts the chartered responses. So the left-hand column is primarily the responses from the board. So it starts with the comments that the board made in general from different chartered notes, kind of summarizing. I didn't repeat them a lot of times, got the gist of it. And then going back to, on page six, there were some specific conversations that came up in relation to comments that the test is not important, and so I did want to include, because we did have comments from several different schools, some concerns about not giving the test much weight. And then there were also some specific comments to tech, and I included those in that last page there. And so those are the only, that's the only way they're arranged. Everything else is random, but I did group those together. So this was kind of a synopsis of the major themes that I saw going throughout, and then I know Terry handed me the clicker. So I did put together a little bit of a PowerPoint, and it's not a whole lot of information, but I did want to share here. Some of you may recall that when I was hired, one of the first things that I talked about was the Wheatley Circles, and that as a district, that before we can truly effectively conduct our work, which is that work that's above the green line there, the structures of things, the patterns, the processes, we have to build relationships, we have to build identity as a district, and we have to share information. And so I think that these work sessions were very powerful, and I appreciate that the board decided to do that because comments repeatedly came up. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you for allowing us an opportunity to share our thoughts. Now that we have some of that foundation built, I think it's important to consider that information that was shared as we move forward in the process. So this is my synthesis, and if you don't believe this is what you, that you said, you know, feel free to correct me, but I felt like that, going through these again, the key message from the board was that we need to simplify and that we need to focus, that we need to look at the depth of what we teach, not trying to cover everything with breadth, that what we do needs to be streamlined, that it's not things that are all over the place trying to pull them together in order to have viable curriculum, that it needs to be consistent across the district, and that it needs to be rigorous. It needs to be aligned, both vertically and horizontally. We can't have different schools doing different things. And then finally, that it's driven by our local priorities and not by a high-stakes test. So I thought those were the major themes that I heard from the board in the discussion. The key message that I heard from staff, and again, I pulled a couple of quotes out of here just to illustrate the message, staff also felt very strongly that we need to focus as a district, that we had too many people doing different things, that we needed to be a unified district in terms of our resources and our scope and sequences, et cetera. The other thing that we heard repeatedly was that we need time. We need time to plan, we need time to reflect on our teaching, we need time to learn for professional development. So there were a couple of quotes that came forward, but at every site, we heard we need to have weekly early release days with structured planning. Another thing that we heard repeatedly was we needed to identify essential standards, and we needed to have common pacing, so that for when students move around, if they move from one school to another, and there were some specific comments about that, that they would at least be generally covering the same things during the same window or period of time. The other thing is that people are choosing which standards to skip, and they're not necessarily all choosing those the same as well. Another key message that came from staff very strongly was that we need to provide a basic text or resource, and the idea that, that there isn't a basic foundation came up over and over again, that time was being spent trying to find material rather than taking the material to the level of depth that needs to occur, ensuring that the resources that we do choose are aligned, both vertically and horizontally. And another theme that came up repeatedly, which is in this quote, is that we do have a lot of new teachers, we do have teachers that leave for various reasons, not always because they aren't making enough money, but they have families, you know, things like that, but that they need to have something to start from also that provides a framework. And then the last two areas was focused instruction. Surprisingly, a lot of people talked about having some common agreed-upon strategies so that we could teach all students to the highest level, and then providing that ongoing professional development. And again, the first bullet, there are training and retraining and time to reflect. It's not a one-shot for adults any more than it is for students, and then that training has to also be followed by collaboration, time to talk and to process. And so those were the main messages that I personally got out of all of the, all of the notes and all of the cards. So really, the question then is what are our next steps? The big areas are the standards. Are we going to identify the real essentials out of those standards and then align those vertically? Where do we begin to look at our resources? How do we prioritize those core subjects? Excuse me. And then finally, this came up again repeatedly from our reading of the Focus book by Schmoker, and I brought the sample for those of you who won't know what I'm talking about, my heavily tagged book. Schmoker talks about all pervasive literacy and the importance of the social studies and science content as we focus on literacy. And so, you know, where do we want to go in relation to the suggestions that we've discovered in elevating the essentials? And so that's basically what I gleaned and bring you forward for the board to begin your discussion about what are our next steps based on these work sessions.
Okay. Where I would like to start with the board is Mrs. Assayer gave us a list of the different points that she got out of this, and I'm wondering, I had some to add. I'm wondering if any of you have some of your own that you would like to bring up.
Mrs. Cox, point of order that we need to have a motion on the floor before we can start discussion.
Thank you. Okay. Would you like to make that motion?
I would. I would like to move that the governing board direct Superintendent Assayer to develop with her team a next steps action plan and also come forward with pertinent resource material mapping and so forth for a revised curriculum for Lake Havas Unified School District.
Second.
All right.
It's really long, though.
There's a lot to it, so...
Did you get that, Mrs. Swimming? All right.
She's used to me.
All right. Mrs. Swimming?
No.
Now, we can discuss.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to start with the board members because I do have some things, anything that you would like to add to Mrs. Assayer's list that she had previously up there? Okay.
I would just like to ask Mrs. Assayer if that proposed motion is agreeable to you. Are you willing to take on the very big chore of putting together a task force and determining a curriculum that you would recommend?
I think, I think I understood Mr. Mastin to come back with a recommendation to the board for the next steps.
We're looking for a recommendation, and also that you would be allowed to utilize your team throughout the district.
So, and to answer your question, I'm absolutely happy to do that. I would be happy to hear from the board members first to have a sense of what you're thinking as well, and then when you're finished, I wouldn't mind sharing what my thoughts are. Yeah, thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify that it's actually in our board policy that our superintendent does just that.
Exactly.
So it's actually in policy right now, so...
Okay. So Mrs. Cohen, did you want to add anything to her list?
Well, I know that, I know that this is the biggest item on our list based on our philosophy statements is the curriculum, so I think it's a good idea to have Mrs. Assayer, you know, circle back with, I'm not sure how she's going to do that, but it sounds like a lot of people are interested in participating in the curriculum discussion, and that's what we heard over and over again. So all I would caution, and I know that it was mentioned before, that we need to look at our curriculum philosophy statement when we're doing that, and then maybe if we wanted to bring back a board policy, because that actually isn't in policy. Our mission statement is in policy. We all agreed on a philosophy statement, but we never invoked it into policy. And just make sure that we're really following the foundational steps that we started back in 2017 to get to the point that we're at now. I know it's such a slow process, but I think that after hearing what all the teachers and staff that attended those philosophy meetings had to say, if everything combined, I feel like there's interest in doing something different, collaborative, if that's the word, with people that are really interested in curriculum. And I don't know if that's the way we will go or what the plan is, but I feel good about the information that we have at least to work with, and would be interested in hearing plans, so...
Mr. Mastin, did you have anything to add?
I look at this as we're about to eat an elephant, because we are. This is, this is not as simple as, here's a set of books. We've got standards from the state that have changed and are probably going to continue to change. We've got to get some mapping and pacing and how does that scope and sequence layout against an eventual resource that we would bring to bear on the selected subjects. With that in mind, you also, because again, this is going to be shifting sand with the state for the foreseeable future, you have to have something in my mind that's very malleable, something that when they tweak the math standard, or they tweak the English Language Arts standard, or social studies, or, you know, science standards, that you can quickly realign something within that curriculum map. And so it may not be what we're used to as far as, let's pull Book A out of Big Three Publisher Slot B and put it on a desk. It may be something completely outside the box, but I think that we need to find something, especially when we're given the cost of a lot of this stuff. The last one that came before us was $230,000 for an English book. When you start talking about the cost, finding something that's going to be malleable, that's going to have a lifespan to it, that's not a couple of years or four years with our funding situations that we get into with the state, I think is very important. I think that as long as we're paying attention to that, that we will, we will come out with something that's very good. The other thing is, is that it would be my hope that as we go through this, that as we start looking at local priorities, that we are very sure that we bring stakeholders from the community into the process. We have some pretty smart people in this community that understand curriculum that are not necessarily inside of our school district, and I think we need to honor them in that, in that process as well. That would be a very good way to ensure that we have our community on board with what our needs are, and I think that partnership between the district and the community is an important one to continue to forge. So if we can get both of those points in there, I think we'll come up with something that'll be a big, a big win for the district.
I forgot one thing, and I stick it in real quick. So in looking at our district philosophy, our definitions, we define scholarship. So the one thing that I forgot to add was, under scholarship, we define knowledge and achievement, including worldview systems of truth claims. And the worldviews are one thing that I'm not sure if we're teaching that at any stage. So that would be something that I would just want to make sure we highlight, because if we're not teaching anything about the different worldviews that exist, then it's really hard to discern truth or understand the agendas that are coming at you from the different worldviews, so that's it.
Mrs. Olliar, anything to add? Mrs. Ramon.
I would just kind of dovetail off of what Mr. Mastin said about the curriculum being adaptable as standards do change. They're impossible to predict, but we hope that the changes are minor going forward, but I think having a curriculum that provides...
But I think having a curriculum that provides some sort of supplemental materials each year would be a good thing, if we can find something like that. The other thing that I heard while we were talking with the different teachers at the schools, textbooks were overwhelmingly mentioned, of course. And I also heard one teacher bring up an idea that I really liked as well, which was incorporating novels as young as third grade, having novels that all the classes read together. And I really like that idea and supportive of that as well.
Okay, thank you. So one of the things that you did not mention, Mrs. Asier, that I felt stood out very strongly was technology, that staff mentioned that we have smart boards around the district that teachers don't know how to use, or software that they don't know how to use, that we have a need for training of staff with those kinds of things. And that there is a concern in elementary that not all of the schools have a similar curriculum. What is the purpose of those labs? And I think then middle school students, I was quite surprised to find out. I did, I talked to Nisa Harris, and she estimates that 20% of middle school students get no computer education in middle school and 30% get it only once in those two years. 50% are able to take two years of middle school computer technology. And then one of the things I was concerned about is that high school teachers mentioned that when kids get to high school, they don't know how to do a PowerPoint, they don't know how to do a lot of things. That's, you know, just very, very concerning to me. And I think that that's something that we need, I would very much recommend that we put in there to address, and that could be one of those shining things that we do in our district, if we can figure that out when all of our kids get to high school. And then if they can't all take middle school computer ed, then maybe there could be an elective at the high school where those students are guided into a freshman semester and get caught up to some extent. I thought one of the interesting comments on resources, I think we all agree about that, and you mentioned that, is one of the teachers said that we have new standards always, but we have outdated resources. And it occurred to me that, I know the middle school teachers seem to like the pacing guides, and I poured through all of the comments. By the way, Mrs. Fleming, thank you for typing all of this up. It's just amazing, the job that you did. But I did take advantage of that, that the middle school teachers don't mind the pacing guides because they use the same resources that Crane does. But at the elementary level, they don't have the same resources, and they find those pacing guides really disturbing and difficult to use. So if we can get those uniform resources, then maybe that would solve that problem. But I do think that that needs to be addressed because every school, those pacing guides at the elementary level were a frustration. Something else that I myself just happen to believe is that we need specialists in science and math at the elementary. I mean, if we could find some way that this came out, elementary teachers are not necessarily that competent in science and/or math, but if they have someone they can go to, you can't have one in every grade level, but hopefully we could have one in intermediate and primary. But that definitely does need to be addressed, especially if we're going to adopt new materials, we're going to need those specialists there to help them learn science and math at a certain grade level. Something else that came up was grammar and writing programs. That came up everywhere. And then the comment that maybe all schools don't agree with this, but that the kindergarten phonics program does not match the state's standards. And whether that's good or bad or important, I don't know, but I've heard we've had a really good phonics program. Well, that was just a comment. I copied it down from, out of this material, and I don't know that we would agree with that. I'm just saying that that is concerning, and we might actually prefer our phonics program and just forget the state's standards for kindergarten phonics. I'm not recommending the state's standards for phonics, believe me. And then we talked about time, and one of the other things about time is time to mentor new teachers, because even if you're given time for PD, there are always going to be new teachers, and the teachers are going to always be mentoring new teachers, equal number of minutes for prep periods. And then we didn't mention, and I think maybe critical thinking came up at almost all of the schools, the need to address critical thinking, and we've all, as a board, expressed the need to do that, so I would not want to overlook that. Something else that came up, I don't know at every school, but uniform furniture and equipment for the classrooms, especially in kindergarten. And then this would be a discussion about science and social studies, but the, you know, again, the high school teachers were saying that when the kids get to high school, our students are not coming in prepared in science and in social studies, and that, you know, we need to get that figured out. And then the next thing would be a solution rather than an issue to address, but of course, elementary counselors is a problem. We need elementary counselors because we have problems, but then to have lower class sizes and full-time art and music teachers will address some of the other problems. But at the elementary level, to have full-time art and music teachers would address some of those problems. But those were some of the things that I felt were important and kind of mostly across the board from what I saw. So is, now, what I would like to do is ask if there's anybody in the audience who thinks that maybe we left something out or at all, because I have to say, and I think the board and no Ms. Asier agrees, that the discussion was so frank, so informative, it was so honest. I think in some cases, it started out, and I would even say courageous, long pauses, and then you spoke, and you informed us, and we learned, and it's really quite amazing. And we've got a job cut out to do, but I think the will is there, and I think we've got the staff to do it. And I have to say, as a former teacher, your knowledge as a staff of what it takes to teach, to instruct, it was all there. This staff is a great staff. It's all there, the potential. Now we just have to do what we can to give you the resources, whether it's curriculum, time, professional development, just do those things for you. And, you know, I don't know how you've done it all of these, what, 10 years without resources. It's remarkable. I would not have had the staying power. Go ahead.
Class size, I think class size needs to be addressed.
Okay. And I did, I did.
Please, help and gifts.
What was your name?
Help and gifts.
Yes, Kelsey. Yeah, I did have that down. I should have mentioned it, but I did hear that, okay.
And you have the big deal too.
Okay. So did we cover it all except for that? Well, it was very comprehensive.
And you don't necessarily have this one, which is where there's all of that synthesized.
No, no.
So that's all, that's in there for the big things.
That's all in there, yeah, okay. So that's all that I have, but I'm ready to get started. Are you ready to get started?
I am. There's a couple of things that I would like to ask, though. So we have, we are in February. If the board is interested and willing to look at time, that would be a revision of the calendar, if we were to look at K-12 early release days every Thursday. And so that would be something that we would need to start working on right away and bring forward. I personally would recommend that. At this point in our time, we have added enough minutes at the high school that we believe that we can make that work. There were many, many comments in relation to time about how important and valuable it was having that time to get together at multiple levels, the horizontal lacrosse grade level and subject, the vertical, as well as just that time to work together as common grade level and subject matter to do some planning and to learn. So that would also allow us to do a little bit more professional development and allow people time to process what it is that they're doing, what's working, what isn't, and how to adjust. So that would be one of the first things that we would need to work on, because it does involve a calendar change for next year.
Superintendent Asier, with that in mind, would we also be looking at the day clock at each grade level?
At the what?
The day clock, how the day lays out. Would it be adding time perhaps to certain days of the week?
Right, we would have to look at that. I believe we currently have enough minutes already in the calendar to do those early release days, but if it isn't there, we would need to do that, yes.
And the other thing is, is this a proposal that on your part to take this district-wide?
I'm sorry.
Would the early releases be district-wide?
They would be district-wide, yes. Yeah, it would be consistently, every school, same day, every Thursday. So, okay. So we can get working on that right away and put that together. This is not going to be popular, but I'm going to say it anyway. I really do believe that particularly in English Language Arts, that we have to identify our essential standards and pacing before we look at resources. And we learned a lesson, I believe, at the high school, in when you try to match what you have to the standards, you do end up going all over the place. So that would be, for me, one of the areas I would like to look at is those literacy standards. I do think that Schmoker talks about literacy, and that's a critical piece. We have way too many standards, everybody's trying to teach them all. I think that we need permission to say, these are the standards we're going to teach, these five in the first quarter, and these assignments, you know, those kinds of things. So for me, that would be the first step. Also, do like to do a survey of staff on some of the thoughts on mathematics resources. So that's just some initial thoughts that I'd like to do even before I bring a plan back.
I personally think that's a great place to start, especially when our discussion was that we've got this bevy of standards that's a mile wide and two inches deep, and we really need this core set of those to go a lot deeper than the two inches. And that's part of the objection to that test, is we're all over the place trying to hit every little last thing, like a ping pong ball going through this stuff. And at the end of the day, if you're not, if you're not developing the child in the right way, you can throw any test in front of them and they'll do poorly. And so developing that depth in task is highly important.
Well, the other thing, too, is that not every text is going to meet all of the Arizona standards. But if we already know that we're not trying to cover all of the Arizona standards, but these key standards, we have a much better chance of finding a text that's going to meet our needs. And so that would make sense, and it is, as well as what the research suggests, is the process that is best to follow. So that will be, give you a heads up, what I'm looking at, I think that we have some guidelines already, we have past work that's been done, we also have a sample from Crane, not that everybody loves it, but I think that that would be a beginning point, that it wouldn't take as much time to do that perhaps as people think, because we do have some foundation to it. The hardest part is going to be eliminating standards and saying, no, we don't have to do this. And then once we have that, I think we could begin a process of looking at materials.
So?
I was just going to mention that that was the one thing that Havasu Pi, when we were at Havasu Pi, without, you know, mentioning anything specific, Havasu Pi seemed very okay with the fact that they were teaching very specific standards. And I don't know if that was because of the experience that's housed at that school, but whereas the other schools did seem overwhelmed with the amount of standards, so that was something that just caught my attention. I don't know.
Go ahead.
I agree with the priorities that you outlined as far as for ELA, looking at the standards and the pacing before you talk about specific curriculums. Just to manage expectations, we're probably not going to see a new textbook in classrooms by the end of the year, if that's the priority. Is that correct? At the beginning of the next school year?
Yes, we're already in February, that would not happen for the fall. However, if we did have the conversation about the narrowing of the standards, we do have some resources that would align to those now, and we also would have the time then to actually do a process in time to have a thoughtful adoption for the following school year.
We have a motion on the floor to turn this over to the administrative team to take this forward. So Terry, would you like to call for the vote?
Arciana Aliar?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cowan?
Yes.
Doug Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes. Okay. 6.8, Mrs. Festerdahl. 6.7, Mrs. Festerdahl.
Gotcha. Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the board approve the presentation, the first presentation of revised policy regulation ECAA-R security. The LHUSD governing board approved the bid to expand video surveillance across the nine campus locations on January 15, 2019. The LHUSD security policy needs to be updated in order to conform to current technology use, provide clear procedures for cameras and video use, ensure access for law enforcement and first responders in emergency situations, and to state limitations to comply with all applicable law. Pending approval of this regulations, exhibits will be developed to support the LHUSD security protocol. This regulation has been reviewed by legal.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve 6.7 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Terry.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cowan?
Yes.
Doug Mastin?
Yes.
Arciana Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes. Okay. Mrs. Festerdahl, 6.8.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the governing board pass the first presentation of revised policy exhibit GCBC-E professional staff supplemental pay plans. This exhibit has not been updated for several years. Many of the extracurricular activities that were listed are no longer offered or have been renamed. This update conforms with activities currently being offered at LHUSD school sites. In addition, changes are recommended for the payment structure. Percentages were changed to dollar amounts for accuracy in budgeting and payment. As the base level teacher salary has changed over time, budgeting for stipends has become more difficult. This revision aligns with how other schools across the state list their stipend amounts. National Board certification stipends were originally authorized by the governing board for the life of the certificate and were cut to three years as a cost-saving measure. During the time, national board stipends were cut back, educational advancement was not granted either. Salary advancement for outside professional development and college coursework has been reinstated for staff. LHUSD supports accomplished teaching, therefore, national board stipends should be for the life of the certificate, which is currently five years, and then must be renewed. LHUSD has had a number of special ed education positions open for more than two years. There are a number of teachers in general education classrooms with special education certificates who choose not to utilize their certification. Special education teachers have extra demands of IEP meetings, goal development, and case management services. This stipend is needed in order to attract and retain special educators and work toward ensuring that special education students have qualified teachers teaching them. This has been reviewed by legal.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 6.8?
I, go ahead.
I'm going to approve motion 6.8.
Do I hear it second?
Sure.
I second.
All right. Terry. Well, okay, let's have a discussion first. I was so surprised when you two made a motion.
Terry, was that motion in a proper form for you?
All right. Do we have any discussion? Any questions of Mrs. Festerdahl? All right then.
No, but I think, I don't, that they're not seeing the chart that we're seeing, so it would be good for them to know that this is a few pages worth of stipends that we pay out to our teachers, and that's not always talked about. So we do talk about all the extra work and clubs and activities that teachers are doing, but this is, we do pay for it, so we should state that. So we should state that, you know, these are extras that we do pay for, just so people don't think that people are out there coaching or doing student council for free, right? I mean, this is good. Anywhere from $1,000, it looks like, up to...
Five hundred to four thousand.
Five hundred to four thousand. So depending on, so I just wanted to state that since it's not up on the board for people to see. But I think it's appropriate totally. So, I mean, I'm not saying anything bad about it, but this is in addition to the salaries, so.
Thank you.
Good deal.
Mrs. Fleming?
Were you going to say something?
I'm sorry, if I may, I just like to add, because I'm not sure everybody in the audience realizes this, one of the unique things that we've added in this particular policy is a stipend for special education teachers at $5,000. Our special education teachers spend many, many hours outside of the classroom doing paperwork and planning and meetings and so forth. And it's just been understood that that's part of the job if you're going to become a special education teacher. And so I'm very pleased that our staff is recommending that we acknowledge the work that our special education teachers do outside of the classroom every day for kids with an appropriate stipend, so.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Asier. Mrs. Fleming?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. 6.9, Mrs. Vestadagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the following changes in job titles: accounting specialist, department chairperson, elementary teacher, classical academy. It is also recommended that the governing approve the final drafts of the job descriptions for these jobs, which are attached. The rationale: adjustments and changes in qualifications and redefining the responsibilities as a specialized job class. These revisions are recommended by the Personnel Department.
Do I have a motion to approve 6.9?
I move we approve 6.9 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I love that everything's getting updated, that's all.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. All right. Mrs. Becker, 6.10. Mr. Becker.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the attached list of title and course description changes for the 2019-2020 school year at Lake Havasu High School. Although the following classes have been taught incorporating the CTE requirements, legislation has changed the requirements and are looking for specific wording and program timeline for funding purposes. Changing the title and condensing the program from a three-year to a two-year program will allow for funding to be received for these two CTE courses. I wish the timing was correct for last month's agenda item and make it easier, but they have done it again.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve 6.10 as presented.
I second.
Any discussion?
I was going to say, didn't we just do this? Yes.
And we'd like to share that the memo, as we noted at the work session, was a little bit missing some information. So the one that you see on the screen is corrected to include the internship class, and so it is four courses.
So the only question that I have in this, why is the prerequisite for digital communications a grade of C or higher in English? Why aren't we raising the bar a little bit? Like, if you're getting a C in English, communication is all about English, right?
Yes.
So I just wondered. It was just a, it's not meant to be a snarky question. It's just, of all the courses, I mean, we have a reading problem. Go ahead.
Well, in some cases, our students who end up taking their current technical education classes don't really find their niche until they get into something that is exciting for them, if they're doing the journalism portion or doing the TV broadcast portion. They really just, they find their niche and...
And then they focus in?
And then they focus.
Okay.
That recommendation, the C minus is put in there as a indicator for having the phases begin.
Okay.
And I would also add to that, if you're struggling in an area, English being one of them, if you have your regular Ed, that's a requirement, and then you're also in a journalism class where you can practice that craft, the more that you do it, the better off and with the more instruction also, it's just going to strengthen that student as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional tools to work on.
When I went to open house at the high school, I did go by and visit this program. They had just gotten back and had won some awards and had done quite well. And I was quite amazed in talking to the students and the teacher. We've had graduates out of this program who've gone on to work for Channel 12. And, I mean, you might elaborate on that, Mrs. Becker, but I mean, it's really has become an outstanding program what these students are doing.
We have several students that have attended the Walter Cronkite...
Yes, College of Journalism, School of Journalism at ASU, which is a real star in their camp to be able to go to a place like that. So, yeah, our students got into that. That School of Journalism is wonderful. So, let's see, Mrs. Fleming, you want to...
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. And Mrs. Walters, 6.11.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the board approve the contract with therapy of staffing for teletherapy with a speech therapist for the 1819 school year, not exceed $35,000. LHUSD has not been able to fill a critical full-time speech therapist position. We have experienced staffing and vendor turnover. Therapy of staffing is an approved vendor under the safe contract. We are requesting approval to contract with therapy of staffing for speech therapy services at a rate of $75 per hour for a total sum not to exceed $35,000. LHUSD is obligated to ensure the provision of services for eligible students to receive a free, appropriate public education for students requiring related services required under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Funds from the minimum budget will be used to pay for services. This has been reviewed for purchasing illegal. The $35,000 isn't for a full-time therapist, but it's going to help us to be able to get the services moving forward as were required.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve 6.11 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Mrs. Fleming?
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Okay. And Mr. Gardner, 6.12.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the addition of the Jump Start national standards in K-12 personal finance of the high school curriculum for the Math of Money course. The Lake Havasu High School District is in the process of reviewing curriculum. The high school math department reviewed several courses and realized there's an opportunity to upgrade the Math of Money course. Currently, Math of Money is considered a fourth-year math class and is beyond the scope of the current state standards. Lessons in units have been aligned to algebra standards and skills that have come to the units to be updated. Incorporating these standards in the units of study is the next step to providing a high-quality financial literacy course. The goal of these standards is to enhance the knowledge of students' financial literacy and bringing them into a more modern and applicable financial world. These national standards delineate the personal finance knowledge and ability of young people to acquire throughout their kindergarten through 12th grade school years with the goal of having them emerge as independent adult consumers fully prepared to make wise financial decisions for a lifetime of financial well-being. The adoption of these standards provides a framework of comprehensive personal finance curriculum that fits the district's goal of pursuing responsible citizens.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we postpone action item 6.12 until next, the next school board meeting.
Second.
Okay. Discussion on that, Mrs. Cohen?
And the reason why.
Okay.
There's a bill out there right now that's looking to, it's for financial literacy for math standards. And in light of everything that we're going through with the curriculum and the philosophy right now, there are other options out there besides this. I understand why this was brought forward. I had discussions with Brad, and I totally understand why it was brought forward. And when you go and look for financial literacy curriculum, this is what comes up repeatedly. I mean, it's overwhelming. But there are other options. And so it would be nice to have a chance to discuss this and not just have it, I mean, this was one of the items that was brought up. It's actually in our philosophy meeting documentation that we got about financial literacy and having some curriculum. But this is just really quick. And again, there's some other options to consider.
Okay.
Not just this one. So that was the reasoning for it, so, to postpone.
Concern I have is currently there's concurrent bills, one in the House and one in the Senate. And I pulled the Senate version of the bill, and it's SB 1184.
Yeah.
And Representative Beasucci is a co-sponsor of this legislation. What it's going to do is it's going to require that the state board have at least one half of a credit course in economics, which shall include financial literacy and personal financial management. That change, when you start adding the word "state board" in there, means that we could actually see standards developed out of the State Board of Education for this. The other thing is, as I looked into Jump Start, Jump Start is backed by the lending industry. And one of its core standards is debt management. I think that we should be doing our students a little bit of a favor in not talking about debt management as much as we should be about debt avoidance. The standard's 52 pages, by the way, and if you Google Jump Start, you can find what I found and actually look at it and read it. I think there are better ways to attack the problem than to automatically go to, and this isn't a government standard, by the way, this is a private sector standard that was put together. And when you see that Visa and Ally Bank and Bank of America and so on are behind the standard, and they have a lot to gain out of credit card revenue and other financial lending apparatuses, it may not be such a bad thing to maybe look in a slightly different direction and maybe weigh a couple more options.
Okay. May I suggest that instead of asking that it be brought back to the next month's agenda and board meeting, is that we wait until it gets resolved in the legislature. And once it gets resolved, then we'll have some direction to go. We could be looking at other materials in the meantime, but really, to your original point, that this is in the legislature right now, there's almost no point in putting it on the agenda in my mind until it gets resolved for the next board meeting.
So you would be asking for an indefinite tabling of it, which means at the end of the meeting, the whole item would die.
Will the motion?
Well, no. So I understand that the math depart, okay, so the way I understand it is that Math of Money is the fourth-year class, correct? It's a...
It's a...
Oh, right. But that what they have right now is not sufficient. So this is something that is pending for the class. Am I understanding that correctly? So this isn't so much about how do we, you know, take our time and do our due diligence? It's more of a, I'm in a critical need for something for financial literacy.
Okay.
So I don't know that we should wait if they're trying to make plans and whatnot for the class that they have right now because they don't have the resources. So I don't know that that needs to wait. This isn't something that's done by the state board at the moment. We can do something now, I think, in the next month, without going through the whole process of adopting some national standards, so to speak. I don't know if I'm making sense right now.
Mr. Gardner.
But to wait until May, when the legislature is over, I think would be very frustrating for those that are waiting for some guidance on where to go.
Mrs. Ramon?
I'm not sure if the teacher of this class is in the room, but I was wondering, was she hoping, or he or she hoping to implement this right away? If we had approved this tonight, was she planning on bringing it into the classroom this semester?
No.
Next school year.
I'm amenable to postponing it for a month. I do disagree a little bit with the idea that this is lending-backed. I looked this up, and on their board of directors, they have, I don't know the exact number, but it was more than a dozen. And the board of directors represent a diverse field. It wasn't just banks, it was also, there was a member from the National Education Association and various other government groups. So I felt assured that it wasn't somehow banks, you know, running the show.
I don't think, I don't think John was necessarily just saying banks. I think the point was, is there's a very specific worldview. We always go back to the worldview. There's a very specific worldview behind teaching our kids that it's normal to have debt. It's normal to have car loans. It's normal to have student loans. It's not normal. It makes your life miserable to be in debt. And what I feel personally, my philosophy, is we should be teaching our students how you go to college without incurring debt, how you purchase a car without incurring debt, how do you start off without debt? For me, that was the big difference as I was looking through it. But John's right in that the partners that support it all have something to gain. I'm not talking about the board of directors, I'm talking about the partners that are pushing Jump Start. Every single one of the 44 partners that are listed on the website have a financial gain in our students.
So...
So that was, that was my concern to start with. And you have to ask yourself, what worldview encourages taking on debt versus what worldview encourages saving and operating without debt? We all know when we don't have debt, you're no longer a slave to anybody. And when you're in debt, there's a lot of stress that's involved with debt. Everybody knows it, sitting in the, every adult in this room knows it, sitting in the room.
Mr. Mastin?
So I look at standard three under credit and debt, which is actually a subsection of this, of this standard set. Would you like to know the kindergarten benchmark, the fourth grade benchmark, the eighth grade benchmark, or the 12th grade benchmark under apply strategies to avoid or correct debt management problems? It doesn't talk about how to avoid debt, it talks about a debt management problem. I just think we can do better than telling our kids that, hey, it's okay to take on all this debt. I'm having discussions like this with my son, who's going off to college, you know, do I go here and it's going to cost me $100,000, or do I go over here where I'm going to get a scholarship and it's going to cost me less? We've got to take a, take a real hard look at how we talk to our kids about money.
I agree.
I can tell you as well that today, just by chance, I talked to a community member in my office, who's a retired business owner here in town, who, we compared notes, and we had very similar notes on our kids. His kids are adults now and out of the house. I used to have all four in my house, but financial management issues are almost identical. And so we've really got to have this discussion with our students. And the other part of this is, is that when I say that there's a kindergarten, fourth, eighth, and 12th grade standard, we're not adopting this for just one class, we're adopting a complete standard set K-12 for the district.
Well, actually, that it says for high school in that...
It does, it does, but once it's adopted, we've adopted a K-12 standard.
I understand that. I understand.
And it is specific for one class. I mean, I get what you're saying about adopting the standard, but this is meant to be used for one specific class.
Right.
Just to speak a little bit about debt avoidance versus debt management, I agree with you that in an ideal world, debt avoidance would be the best strategy. Not everyone is independently wealthy. And if you're graduating from high school and you want to go to higher education, taking on some debt is a standard process. I agree with you about having the conversations with kids and helping them understand that when they take student loans, they are responsible for paying that. And debt, to me, represents risk. Like any risk, there is calculated wise risk, and there is frivolous unwise risk. Like any risk, there is calculated wise risk, and there is frivolous unwise risk. Taking on debt to pursue something like higher education, or maybe taking out a small loan to buy a used car so that you have reliable transportation and can have a full-time job and the benefits that that incurs, that, to me, seems like a wise type of debt to take on, provided that you understand that you have to repay it, and provided that you have a plan for how to do so. So teaching kids how to come up with that type of plan, to me, seems like the best course of action.
So I'm gonna have to, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna have to totally challenge that because, first of all, the, and I don't have the statistics in front of me, I'll be happy to bring them next time, but the amount of students that are dropping out of college and have their entire life and their family's life destroyed because none of them know how to manage debt is a big problem. So we've got auto loans, the auto loan bubble is at $1 trillion right now, and the student loan bubble is at $1.5 trillion. So in my opinion, it's absurd to teach students how to manage debt as long as you have a plan, because plans fall apart. People lose their jobs, economies go south, and we've got kids dropping out of college before they ever get to realize that return on investment that, you know, I've really gotta question whether that's even there for a lot of categories. It's certainly not there for our teachers, right? I mean, they were promised, you go to school, you get educated, you're gonna have a return on investment, look where we're sitting. So I think that there's no question that a lot of our students are gonna incur debt along their young adult life, but they should know there is another path. There's a lot of people that pay cash for their first car, there's a lot of people that drive a junker. Sorry to say it, Mr. Murray, but Mr. Murray drove a junker for a while, right? I mean, you did.[1259.58][1259.58](laughing) Not everybody has to have a brand-new car, and a lot of people pay cash as they go to go to college. And while a lot of kids won't wanna do that, and some kids can do scholarships, and there's all kinds of opportunity, they shouldn't be taught that this is okay and this is a standard practice. They should have all the information and be able to make the choice themselves. So they should know that there is an option to go through life without debt, and the stress that they're watching their parents and their teachers and everybody else go through because they've incurred that debt. And I feel very strongly about that, having that information, they should have that information.
May I say that who is going to look into other such courses, because certainly some course in this regard is very important?
Yes.
And so let's make a plan, or let's try to come up with something that we can say, these are the options, or whatever, and then we examine this, because there might be, like you said, yes, most people do have to incur debt, and yes, we should teach them that they don't necessarily have to incur it, and both things, I think, are correct, so if Mr. Gardner or someone's going to look into options, that would be nice.
I have sent alternatives to Mr. Gardner, so...
Mrs. Fleming, can we hear the motion again?
To postpone until the next school board meeting.
Okay. And so this would reappear at the next school board meeting, and would we have more materials to look at, or what are you thinking, Mrs. Cohen?
Well, I was, I have sent Mr. Gardner some alternative options. Dave Ramsey, they have a middle school and a high school curriculum that's Cohen, you know, that, what's the word I'm looking for? Comports with standards, and so I sent him some information, and, you know, that's where I'm at right now. I had reached out to him and asked him, you know, was this something somebody felt strongly about, what was the purpose? I wanted to get a idea of why this was brought forth right now, and so after hearing how it kind of occurred, you know, I felt, I told him that I was gonna ask for a postponement so that we had some time to look at other options.
Okay. Go ahead.
I would be happy to look at other options as a member of the Board. I would also be happy if Jump Start remained as one of those options the next school board meeting.
Okay. I call for the question?
If I'm, I'm sorry, if I may, I think, if I may offer the suggestion that Mr. Gardner work with the staff and look at the various standards that are out there, instead of just adopting a set of national standards, since we know there's going to be some additional financial literacy legislation, that we actually just identify the financial literacy standards for this course, that could be taken from any number of sources and then bring those back to the Board for approval. That would allow the Math of Money course to go forward, do the planning on the standards that make sense for that course, without having to adopt a K-12 set of national standards at this point in time. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. Let's call for the question.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Mr. Murray, 6.13.
Madam President, members of the Board, it's recommended that the Board approve the vouchers for January 2019, as well as student activity funds and auxiliary funds for December 2018 for grades K through 12.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Fleming?
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. All right. Mrs. Sisner, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam President. As always, I appreciate our contributions, our gifts and donations, we do talk about those very quickly in the consent agenda, but we have amazing support in our community. This month, over $25,000 in donations to our district, so that's very impressive. I also wanted to share with the Board that we have asked our high school staff, the entire staff, to participate in what is referred to as the Alice Training on March 7th. This is a commitment for our staff, it was piloted at the middle school, and this is an actor shooter training, an active shooter training, excuse me, it's a six-hour training, and essentially what it does is it helps staff to become proactive instead of reactive should the awful situation happen where we have an active shooter. Our officer, Earhart, presented to our administrative team about all of the deaths in Parkland that could have been avoided had staff had training. When they do the Alice Training, they talk a lot about Virginia Tech and all of the deaths that could have been avoided had certain actions been taken, and so we really feel that this is critical, we want our entire staff to participate, and so we will be doing that on March 7th in lieu of holding our normal parent conferences that day. And so I will get something out to the community, letting them know that we won't be holding the parent conferences that afternoon, and that our staff will instead be involved in training. So I wanted to give the Board a heads-up on that.
Okay. Do the Directors have anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
Oh, well, it says right here, Directors, so that's...
They have their reports in writing.
Oh, that, oh, that's correct, all right. Governing Board members, do any of you have anything to add?
Were we gonna mention the elimination of our work sessions?
She decided not to.
Yeah, I, you wanna, oh, we can share that.
Okay, why don't, then, why don't you share that?
I guess we just decided not to have the work sessions anymore because we have so many meetings going on, and people weren't really attending the work sessions anymore, so we'll continue to get our board packets, I guess, and we'll reach out to whoever we have questions, and so we were kinda joking about how we eliminated something, so now it's up to staff to try to find something to eliminate. You gotta start cutting stuff, get rid of stuff. Simplify.
And this is effective after March, correct?
After March, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, I would add, for the purpose for the audience, and this is something that I learned when I got here, the work session was simply to go through the agenda and provide the Board the opportunity to ask any questions about the agenda prior to the meeting, and so the Board has committed to do so. Part of our concern is that there was robust discussion that needs to occur in the public meeting, and that's the purpose of the agenda of the public meeting, is for this discussion to occur in public in front of any community members who are interested. And so to have everybody committed to have to attend two meetings in order to hear all of that discussion, it seemed like it was not as productive as it could be, and they all have agreed that they can ask questions and get those answers in advance so that the discussion can occur as it did this evening.
And one more thing, one of the things that I will miss about the work sessions is that I felt, because it was more informal, that people from the audience felt the freedom to kind of weigh in on some of these topics, and I do hope that if you are a stakeholder, which I think that's everyone in this room, and you have something that you wanna say on a topic that we're discussing, I hope you do reach out via email or phone and let us know what your perspective is.
Thank you. Terry, do we have a call to the public?
We have a call to the public.
Okay. Any suggestions from Board members for future agenda items? And the press? That's you.
Later.
Okay, okay. All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Seconded.
Okay, Terry.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm gonna let you have it, this...